...JSA 10 colon 4 dash 6. On January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, proper notice was sent to the Courier Newspaper and the Star Ledger and filed for the township report board and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Please be aware of the legislative policy for public hearings. No new applications will be granted after ten P.M. and no new testimony will be taken after ten fifteen P.M. Hearing assistance is available upon request. Accommodation will be made for individuals with a disability pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act. Dividing the individual with disabilities provides forty-eight hours advance notice to the planning board, to the planning department secretary before the public meeting. However, if individuals should require special equipment or services such as a card or transcriber, seven days advance notice excluding weekends and holidays may be necessary. Please rise to salute the House.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated, free, and just.
Here.
Mr. Franco?
Here.
Mr. Norgals?
Here.
Ms. Powers? Absen? Mr. Lerman?
Here.
Mayor Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Pandia?
Here.
Chairman Casamendo?
Here.
A call of more minutes. Scott, we have more minutes to approve, right?
We do. They will send to the board electronically and you will have the first copy of the transcript that we left, the recorded transcript by the recorder.
Okay.
They're in your packets, the cover sheet. It's the transcript.
I read the one sent via email.
Correct.
That was for the advocate, the twenty-third, right?
That is correct. The others are still pending.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance for a view those?
It's simply, it's leaving the transcript.
From this? Okay, so there's nothing?
It's pre-sold.
Okay. Okay.
Could I please be told who was the first?
Mr. Rothman. Yeah, the second by Mr. Franco.
Thank you. Mr. Rothman?
Will call please.
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Norgals?
Yeah.
Councilman, apologies. Mr. Lerman?
Yes.
Mayor Hayes?
Yes.
Chairman Casamendo?
Yes.
I'm also going to... Mr. Pandia?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next agenda on the, the next item on the agenda for this evening is line of applications, CIP two, and our grid border holdings LLC group two oh two, two oh six, block four eighty-three, block seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Evening, council.
Good evening, Chairwoman. Kevin Colley, only on behalf of the Hopkins. As you were just discussing earlier on September twenty-third, this application is for preliminary and final site approval for the primarily commercial development of the ORC zone and preliminary site approval for the residential development on the north side of the ORC zone. We were also here last week with respect to a parking variance for the ORD property which joins the ORC zone and you heard extensive testimony with respect to that variance. I'd like to just point out in maybe a failure of my presentation that the variance we sought for the ORD zone had nothing to do with the RC partner that ran the previous testimony concerning the parking in the RC zone that we presented testimony that the parking was compliant with the... So this, this variance is purely related to the ORD zone and it is essentially triggered by the loss of twenty-two parking spaces to create a new entrance way from the RC zone to the ORD zone. So I think a lot of people may have been misunderstood or misinformed about what that was about. So I'd like to call one additional witness as to the ORD parking variance. That's Mr. Dean who's done a few more traffic counts since the last hearing. After that, we would call Mr. Diamond, Brandon Diamond, the commercial project architect who will identify some of the, the board showing the materials that will be used on the site and tie them into the prior testimony. And after that, it would be our plan to, to rest on this application unless, or if some other questions that you'd like to bring up to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Colley, with the letter, attorney, Eric Finns.
Yes, thank you.
I wanted to ask Mr. Finns, who is here tonight, to get my appearance and to show over Mr. Finns.
What do you think, Eric? Eric Finns, F-R-I-N-S, sign law group, as stated in our letter, I represent a group of individuals who are opposing this application. Again, as stated in the letter, I was just hired today, three thirty, four o'clock, basically by the time I got the letter to you. All I'm asking is to hold this application open until this goes to November meeting. I understand me, we, I'm barely caught up on the issues myself, but in a, you know, in a, to do my own due diligence, representing my, my clients, I would need time to prepare, time to look at the transcripts from prior meetings, time to consult experts. So I'm asked, I'm fine with, you know, finishing the application, but for rebuttal or request per opposition, I mean, that's to be held open until some time that I'm able to consult with my clients to, you know, properly compare the application.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
That's okay.
Who do you represent?
Well, as of right now, I represent Crystal Fresco, F-R-E-S-C-O. And in discussions with Ms. Fresco, I would be representing, and she, she is part of a group that is opposing this and obviously with them, you know, in the coming days.
Excuse me, none of us can hear very well anything going on. Maybe you can speak up. Who do you represent?
I represent Crystal Fresco, F-R-E-S-C-O, and she is part of a group of people who are opposing the application before the board. And as, as I said, I would be consulting with that group together in the coming days.
What's the name of the group?
Doesn't have a name, it's just a group of individuals. Led by Ms. Fresco, I would say. They led or organized or phrase it, but that was the person that I'm in contact with and what they came by.
Are the microphones working? You can't hear?
Can't hear. I don't think I have a screen on.
Microphone should be working. One, two, three.
That's much better. That's much better. It's talking directly into it.
Yes, as I stated, Councilor, again, Ms. Fresco, F-R-E-S-C-O, was the person who retained me today, literally today, three thirty, four o'clock. So I'm simply asking to hold this open, one more, to one more meeting. I understand being convenient because everybody here, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't do, diligently represent my clients, my requests for the, for the board.
Colley, you have an opposition to this request?
Yes, Mr. Collins, I do. This application has been pending since May of two thousand and eighteen, it was very complete in August of two thousand and eighteen. We've had any number of hearings and we are prepared to proceed this evening and tomorrow evening to review this application.
Madam Chairman, it is unusual to get a request for postponement of this late days in an application. The request is to postpone the, yes, the request is changed from the letter, which is requesting postponement for the people from here, but now it's a request to people from here from tonight, I guess tomorrow night and the other as well.
Can you go through the mic, please?
So to the board whether you want to grant such a continuation of the case.
The idea is to hear.
The applicant has objected to the postponement until the November meeting. The applicant has objected to the continuation of the case to the November meeting. And so we have tonight and tomorrow night and the applicant is ready to proceed. Also, the object, their facilitation ability to appear to be here tonight and to hear the testimony of the applicant's witnesses and cross-examine the applicant's services. From that setting, you might want to just continue hearing the case tonight, go to the meeting, decide what you're going to carry to tomorrow night. And then, you know, I understand.
I agree. I think since you're here tonight, we proceed with the, the session as planned. The witnesses are here for the applicant and they're ready to testify and you can cross-examine them tonight. So let's see how this meeting goes and we'll revisit that, the question you have to conclude the hearing on the November twelfth date at the end of this meeting.
If I may just quickly, as far as cross-examining, again, I'm not caught up on all of the issues. I can listen to what they have to say.
Would you please pick up the mic and answer the question?
Again, as far as including their presentation today, tomorrow, I have no objection for them going forward, but as far as cross-examining them, again, I don't have a full grasp of the issues and I think that would be a disservice to my clients where I do cross-examine them because we wanted their part, if they, if they would be left until the November meeting and I could cross-examine them and then, again, I'm fully prepared, I'm not going to have to be on the pair. Respect.
We've had this, we've had this meeting scheduled for some time and as the applicant says, this is, we've had meetings since, we've had meetings since two thousand and eighteen, many meetings. So I would like to proceed with tonight's witnesses and we will revisit whether or not we come back on November twelfth at, at the end of tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. Collins, just, I'm sorry, I have to approach. I was at the meeting, sorry, Andy Fresco, Lady who's Drive Bridgewater. I was at the whole meeting this summer and I approached and I asked questions and, "Sir, you ridiculed me and you shut me down because you said I was not able to speak at that meeting because the applicant was not here." Since that summer meeting, there's been only one other meeting, one other meeting, okay? I'm involved with the attorney that we, we retained.
Mr. Fresco, you're involved with Mr.?
That's my wife, Chris Fresco, is my wife.
So you see, you're attorney?
He's not my attorney, he's representing my wife and some other, and some other members as you know.
Okay, so you can't, you can't speak yet as the testimony, when the applicant has done his business, will be open to the public.
I understand, but to your point.
But you can't argue for your attorney, your husband's attorney.
No, I'm arguing for the, I have, we have the meeting today because we've only had one meeting, sir, since the spring. So these residents have had trouble contracting an attorney, okay, because we were unaware of the scope of this. Okay, that's what my argument is. And that's why I believe that this should be adjourned because these residents came together and found an attorney that was willing to, and incidentally, I am fully aware that several attorneys have conflicts with the applicant, which is, which caused delay in the power of attorney for that. So I just want to point that out, it's been one meeting, sir.
As you know, this matter has been publicized over and over.
Since when?
Other notice was given again and again explaining the full scope of this application. So that statement has no validity. I'd like to proceed with your, thank you.
Do you want to come here first?
Yeah, call Mr. Dean, Gary Dean.
Good evening, Gary Dean. Eric has just put on her robe.
Mr. Dean, you testified here with respect to the parking variance on the ORD order of the site.
Yes, it is.
And that was last month, that's out like the twenty-third, right? And since then, did you suggest the applicant that perhaps you would clarify things if you did some more parking counts?
Correct.
And did you do those parking counts?
I have.
Did you do them in the same general mode as you had done the prior parking counts?
That is correct.
All right. And when did you do these new parking counts?
Recognizing that the board and the public expressed some skepticism regarding the season with which our original parking counts were conducted in early June and then this summer, I felt that the opportunity between the September twenty-third hearing and this presentation would be advantageous to collect additional parking data. Those counts were conducted, I believe it was Thursday, October third, and Tuesday, October fifteenth. We conducted our parking counts during morning periods and afternoon periods identical to our prior study. The parking count on October third, oh, let me re, step back. The maximum parking demand that we observed over, I believe it was ten or twelve different samples, was this July with five hundred and twenty-nine parked vehicles on the ORD portion of the campus, five twenty-nine. From our counts conducted within the past three weeks, on October third, it was five hundred and forty-eight. On October fifteenth, the maximum demand was five hundred and twenty-seven, absolutely in line with the prior data. And so this additional sampling allows me to speak with confidence that the presentation and conclusions I reached regarding the adequacy and sufficiency of parking, now providing probably up to fifteen or so different samples, is valid, that seasonality had no bearing on those conclusions, and that this campus will continue to enjoy abundant parking circles. That's all I have.
Go to the question.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, in all of the traffic counts you did, what was the highest parking count?
Five forty-eight.
Five forty-eight, and that was taken on October third?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any member with a question?
Mr. Dean, how many, how many parkings did this?
There are eleven hundred and ninety.
And we're taking away some.
Twenty-two, leaving eleven hundred and sixty-eight.
So the difference between that, so say six hundred, so you've got five hundred in back?
We've got, correct. At least the amount of parking.
Sorry, I have a member of the board with a question, Mr. Dean. Seeing none, I will put it up to the public. Is there any member of the public with a question for this witness regarding his testimony? If there is, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Scott, please go forward, state your name and address for the record.
My street address is two thirty-four, two thirty-five East Main Street. I just have a brief question for the other witness. I heard your testimony both tonight and prior, in the prior session. One of the questions I did have for you was on the issue of parking there. Someone had raised the issue prior, but I thought we could address this again, which is, there's a green book that's put out nationally on parking. I was wondering, using the green book numbers versus the numbers that you've had, did you reference that as a, as a, as a measure to, to the parking there?
That was not part of my testimony tonight, no.
Okay. But I guess the question I have for you then, did you consult the green book when you were doing your parking analysis?
Not the first time and not this time and principally because I don't know what the green book is.
Well, the green book is a standard book on parking. It basically has in there nationally, uh, numbers for different types of, of uses. The thing that I found.
Again, I didn't consult it, I'm not familiar with that, and the reason we're here is that the township ordinance.
Yes.
Specifies a specific amount of parking.
Yes.
That the campus does not meet today.
Yes.
And we are seeking to, I'll say, confirm that variance for this site.
I understand that, but my question is directed over whether that is decided because it is a, a national tool that is statute for parking.
I cited the actual parking experience on the campus and that is all.
Okay, that's for a two month, I appreciate that.
I just want to remind everybody, if you're looking for a seat, there's additional seating in a room down the hall with TV's built for viewing what's happening here in there. So, thank you. Any other member of the public, please go forward, state your name and address for the record.
Bill Thomas, seven seventy, I don't know if you have it. Mr. Dean, last meeting you were asked whether or not you could hold any of the current tenants to see what percentage of their space, of their space, what percentage staffing they were currently at. For all we know, the current tenant may have zero people, or the lease may allow to have a hundred people, whatever the case. Have you polled any of them since the last meeting?
I have not.
Okay, so for all you know, there could be tenants in there that have zero people who could fully stay up tomorrow and require a lot more parking, but your analysis has not taken into account.
My analysis has taken into account that ninety-three percent of the space is leased and ergo, presumably occupied. You've heard other witnesses describe the use of that space.
The other witnesses all said the same thing, nobody is taking a look to see what percentage of any given tenant has stayed up for space. All you're saying is currently, this is the number of parking spots, you're not saying that's the number of parking spots needed if all the tenants were fully staffed for space.
I have estimated the amount of parking that's needed if all of the space is leased and that number was, I believe, right around six.
So you still have to ask any of the tenants by manual polling or the?
Correct, that is, that's correct. I have.
Good evening, Matthew Bench, thirteen oh three, Roger Avenue. Sir, how do you conduct the parking studies? Is it by drone or is it by physically counting the cars?
This was by physically counted.
And is your, is your analysis taken into consideration in car driving, parking drone?
Yes.
When you conduct the studies in the summertime, are you driving a drone or by manual?
Manual counting. Understand, the drones are used to basically take pictures that are then used to manually count them.
Okay, so maybe back up. So did somebody physically walk at the site and count cars or are they counting from a picture taken by?
They physically count at the site.
Well, I'm obligated.
Correct.
How did the, what were the times of day?
Roughly ten in the morning and then post-lunch between one-thirty and two-thirty in the afternoon. My response was, I didn't know which employee conducted the count on which day. I knew who the employees were. It is not my practice to engage people who are unrelated to this proceeding and have their names become public. They're my employees and I do guard their privacy. So unless I'm compelled, in Mr. Collins' cavey direction, I did not check, I presented their names.
Thank you for your behavior, because that causes the doubt. Is there any other member of the public with a question for this witness regarding his testimony? Seeing none?
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Just, oh.
Mr. Dean, the central part of your testimony is the ninety-three percent occupancy, which is basically in the extrapolated, counting the cars, that represents the universe, ninety-three percent of the option. Where did the ninety-three percent come from? Did you get that from Thor? Did you have any direct relation with, with the owner of the complex as to how many people they had there?
It came from the applicant, yes. Not people, how much space essentially remains vacant.
Okay, but you said basically, the assumption when a building is rented, there is an assumption as to when it's, when it's going to be filled. And I thought at one point you said, based on the building being rented, it's therefore rented, it's occupied, to that, to whatever level.
Correct.
Would you have thought about going back to Thor directly to make sure that you've got a number that, that you could be comfortable with?
I have not gone back to Thor. I presented our initial set of findings in two thousand and eighteen. We then conducted supplemental counts in July of this year. I then conducted a third set of supplemental counts within the past three weeks. The two thousand and eighteen numbers were slightly lower, not a lot, but slightly lower.
I understand the count process.
Over the past three months, four months, the counts have been consistent. And so my expectation is now having taken not just one day of counts, two days of counts, just a wide spectrum of data, that I'm very confident that we have counted and observed peak parking demand on the ORD campus as it's been occupied. If someone has been paying a certain amount of land per square foot, I do expect them to use it and fill it with employees. Is there a potential for a little more absorption in any space in course of this? But again, we have fifty percent, or should I say a hundred percent, of parking than this site needs. I could be off by twenty percent, there's still plenty of parking.
Do you recall what the occupancy rate was, you heard of, when did the?
I do not. It may have been ninety or it still may have been ninety-three, but I believe there was testimony that one of the larger tenants was over that period renovating or hadn't quite come to full capacity. That's why the two thousand and nineteen data gives us another benchmark of parking demand on this campus. So that's why I feel pretty confident that we're certainly have abundant parking to grant the variance related. Certainly. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, so we'd like to call Brendan Diamond, the historian, conduct the examination.
Counselor, Mr. Rothman, sorry, I'd like to see the five minute recess at this time. Thank you. We're going to adjourn for five minutes and be back shortly.
Yeah, they're to create, you know, in my judgment, a pretty well-tuned material palette.
Do you want to add your question? These people have an opportunity to see all the material. Does anyone have a question for this witness? Seeing none. Is there a member of the public with a question for this witness regarding his testimony, regarding material towards? Yes, please go forward, state your name and address for the record.
Ross Sanders, six six two Seabrook Road, Bridgewater, and also chairman of the Crisis Varmo Community for, for twenty-five years worked on the site. Sir, you're talking about the main street, which is basically aimed at developing a town center, is that right?
Yes.
Does it make sense to you to have a town center for Bridgewater at the northern end of Bridgewater, just next to the district?
In this case, the question of a town center just...
In this case, the question of a town center, just to take it completely at its word, it sounds like the question is, a town center can be big or small. You know, in this case, the size of the development was tuned for the redevelopment zone for this project. It is by comparison, a relatively small town center, which is related to the other uses on the site. If the question is, you know, would a much larger town center be the right move for this site? I couldn't answer, but I do believe that for the density and use, it has been well tuned for the size of the project.
So you're really talking about a midtown center, which really serves, which will really serve the purpose only of a small section of Bridgewater.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I wanted to know my objection with the record that this line of questioning doesn't address Mr. Brandon's testimony. I don't think it's necessarily...
I'm sorry, good.
What's your last name again, sir?
Sanders.
Sanders, try to focus your questions on the direct testimony that the witness just gave, which is about the materials.
I'm sorry, I can't come up with one.
Is there any other member of the public with a question?
Good evening, Matthew Mensch, 1303 Roger Avenue. Sir, can you provide the public with any background as to how you selected the material types that you're suggesting?
What we do in selecting materials is it's built on a project story, which is a process that started two years ago in collaboration with the applicant, members of the board. I would say that the key to selecting great materials is particularly when creating authentic Main Street, that the materials, particularly the masonry products, do not look too new and too manufactured. We put a lot of time to create what we felt were, you know, materials that had a good sense of handmade masonry, had the right patina for this project. And we varied them from building to building.
And can you, I'm not super familiar with materials. Can you provide some more background on type of material and why you selected that type? Is it just by look or is there any functionality?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to address this line of questioning. Mr. Diamond had extensive testimony last year as to the extent, the selection of materials. And today he is merely presenting physical versions of the boards and testifying that they are consistent with the boards that were previously presented. So I am objecting to this line of questioning, it's outside the scope of this testimony.
I'm not sure, Mr. Collins, do we know, or Counsel, do you know when that meeting was?
It was October 22nd, 2018.
So we're talking a year ago that the public and the board is supposed to remember the compelling testimony regarding the type of material used in the building? And you're objecting to asking questions about how it got selected? I'm not quite sure if I understand what on earth the objection can be about, given, given the length of time it was made.
I'm objecting to the line of questioning, it's outside the scope of this testimony for this evening and there was a party last meeting where it testified.
You know, the, I think it's totally outside the scope, but I think the witness actually can do this fairly easily. So the witness knows what he considers the scope. I do think we have to focus in on the area effect, which is the colors and the materials. But he did say, I wanted to know more about materials in the question. So with that being said, let's continue but try to like focus in on what did you clarify about these material boards tonight and what are they for?
Sure. I would say that one of the principles to selecting good materials is to give them a good sense of scale to people who are walking by them in public streets. The masonry products that we've selected are modular brick, which is one of the smaller bricks available, which is perhaps one of the most attractive to people being close to it. And we've taken great pains to make sure that the materials have a great sense of human scale. That's one of the principles we go for. Each building has its own individual character, but we spend a lot of time thinking about the palette that varies from one to one. It is a compositional exercise.
Have, with regards to the type of material you're suggesting, did you compare that to the type of material used in any other buildings in Bridgewater Township?
The, no, I would say that we're more concerned with the way they compare to each other as a district.
However, when we are considering large scale development in terms of its visual impact on Bridgewater, is it your testimony that you either did not do any research to see whether similar materials used in any other building in Bridgewater?
No, I've been through Bridgewater, I've certainly observed. But the way I've made a decision about these materials is not to, to say, is it consistent with another project down the street? Rather, the guiding principle is creating a strong project story for the district and one that ties into the research campus as well. So there's a lot of fuss that go into it that are particular to the use, the context.
Similar question with regards to the coloring of the materials you suggested. Did your analysis or selection involve looking at the color schemes used in other buildings or projects down Bridgewater to determine whether or not this, this coloring fits? General look of these buildings have got to fit into any similar in Bridgewater?
No, because in my judgment, what we're creating on this Main Street, when you have buildings that are primarily facing each other, is you're creating a context on its own that has to be as tastefully executed on its own. The question you're asking about comparing to other buildings, to me, would be much more relevant if we had a building that was directly fronting other buildings and we were creating more of an urban context. I believe this project creates its own urban context and deserves its own palette.
I think we do agree, it creates its own urban context, we're agreement on that. Thank you.
Andy Fresco, Ready Horse Drive. Sir, you used the word authentic three times, authentic Main Street. What do you mean by authentic?
Authentic means to us that the finished product, when done right, has the look of urban one voice in the design language, which means we don't use the same brick on a Main Street from one end to the other, especially because we have multiple tenants who are going to move in, who have their own personalities. So we take a lot of pains to make sure, when I say authentic, that the buildings, one, have a sense of age, they don't look too new. Secondly, that they have versatility to adapt to a lot of different storefront personalities that move into them.
Would you say that downtown Somerville was authentic?
I won't comment on it, I've not studied enough to comment on it well, so I prefer not to.
That's all right, and forgive me, I raise everything under question, so that may be a little bit silly.
No, if it's something I know, I would absolutely respond.
Fair enough. You did say that you're from the area, you studied the area, so I'm a little surprised that you don't know what's happening in Somerville. How about Browerton? Would you say that Browerton, New Jersey is authentic?
On these cases, I think you'll find lots of towns that you could cite that I don't have that knowledge, but go ahead and ask.
Well, I think we're all just looking to get a clear picture of what your definition of authentic is. And if I may, is it your vision that we're seeing here or is it their vision? Or is it his vision? Or is it their vision? Whose vision is it, sir?
I just wanted to object, Madam Chair, Mr. Diamond made extensive testimony as to how the architecture complied with the ordinance requirements. I'm not sure what the question is directed to as to the vision.
Try to focus, Mr. Fresco, was something he's talking about in his direct testimony?
He said that he, referring to himself, chose the color palette. So I'm trying to understand if it's him physically, this gentleman here, or if it's him as in the developer, or if it's him as in a group including yourselves. Is that allowable?
Yes, please ask.
I'm happy to answer it. So when I am speaking personally about something on this design, I'm saying that I purposely authored it. However, it has been a two-year process, which I continue to be collaborative.
One final question about the color, and I think this should be allowable, because you had a few moments talking about it. Can you speak to the reflectivity of these materials?
Relatively low reflectivity. I think that's an important aspect of them.
Was that part of your decision?
It's not, I think that certainly masonry materials have a low reflectivity. The only thing I can think of on this that has any reflectivity whatsoever is glass. The painted materials do not strive to have, they tend to have flat finish as well.
Why wouldn't you want reflectivity?
Why would you want reflectivity? What, I don't know if you can understand what glory you're using and what principle you're talking about in terms of reflectivity.
Again, I have to lead you down a path to bring you to...
What are you trying to ask?
I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you, but I have to follow the rules, so forgive me, it's kind of silly, it's like I said. Reason I bring up reflectivity, sir, is because I'm concerned about lighting, okay? So if you can just convince us all that this material is not going to reflect into all the wonderful neighborhoods and wooded areas and all the neighboring areas, that's why I ask about reflectivity.
These buildings have very low reflectivity. We're not talking about metal with reflectivity, we're talking about masonry products and other flat panelized products that have zero reflectivity. The only reflectivity that I think of has any value is a roof material that might have some reflectivity to break down heat gain, and that's just the choice of a color for roof. But we're not even talking about that. I think these, these buildings will not reflect light onto adjoining houses. Now to mention, they're not very close to adjoining houses.
That's what you said. You look at that map, you're less than 100 feet, obviously, sir, but nevertheless.
Not the buildings that I'm testifying about, which are the commercial buildings, so...
Fair enough. Now that you've opened that can, if you don't mind, I will follow up. So tell us, sir, which buildings did you design and which did you not? A little weird, I guess I'm kind of wondering, did you design the apartments? I can just come out and ask you to save us all the trouble.
Madam Chair, we previously identified which buildings are part of the commercial section and are actually listed on the material boards.
I'll save the trouble, that's fine. Sir, final question, did you, did you have any involvement with designing the fence that will be separating the two?
No, I did not.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public with a question for this witness? Please come forward.
Little Hough, 770 Mountain View Avenue. So I don't know which buildings you designed, but so I'm just basing this on you saying you designed the commercial buildings. You talked about material and colors that are pleasant for the tenants, for the people coming to shop in those stores, that kind of thing. I'm on Mountain View Avenue, so right now I think what's going to happen is when I look out my windows, I'm going to see the loading dock for the ShopRite. I'm going to see the lights for that parking lot that are on the southern section. I'm going to listen to those trucks all night long. What sort of material is being used to screen a home on Mountain View from the light, the sound of the trucks, the view of the trucks at the loading dock, that type of thing?
What I would say is, our landscape consultant has built in the screening for that purpose. I don't believe I can testify to it fully, as most of those screening devices are done in the landscape design.
I haven't seen any sort of design that shows a straight screen along the U S other bench there. Is there something that's been published that I'm missing or are you saying that it's going to be a screen?
I'm not going to testify one way or another, because it's been a little time since I've seen the landscape documents. But I do believe that they are the appropriate witness to talk about landscape screening.
Okay, so one last question. So on the commercial building, she took into account what's pleasant for the tenants, what's pleasant to people shopping there. Have you done anything to take into account what's pleasant for the homes surrounding it, either across 202 or on mountainside or any other place that bordered that?
We certainly believe that once we hit the gateway of this project, and remember that the gateway of those commercial buildings is about 200 feet, at least 200 feet back from the frontage road, that we're creating a very pleasant environment.
So I'm not sure I understand the question. Did you take into account any of the homes surrounding that, whatever? Did you take into account what's pleasant for them when you chose materials?
We tried, is there a specific building that you're concerned about?
Well, you know, it's easy, you can see the ShopRite, that's going to be an issue for everybody on Mountain View. I think there's a cafe that's going to be up closer to 202 where the townhomes are going to be. That will be in the sight of everybody on Mountain View. There's the whole parking lot there that runs parallel to Mountain View, so you can just start with those. But on this next question, you took into account what's pleasant for all the tenants and people going to shop there. Did you do anything to take into account what's pleasant for the homeowners around the block? That's, that's my...
No, no, it's a fair question. Certainly, I'm just going to point to the plan here. The cafe building, or the retail, oh, excuse me, the residential building with a cafe corner, that had very small scale massing, we put a lot of high quality materials into this building, particularly because it's on the frontage road, because it is close to the property homeowner. There's a lot of masonry, there's a lot of sense of scale in that building. You're concerned with the ShopRite, you know, as a larger tenant. We have upgraded the palette for, we've been, we've shown an original palette for this building and have upgraded the material palette for the ShopRite. However, it is still going to require high quality landscape screening to address your concern.
I haven't really said that. Well, it sounds like we don't know if there's actually landscape screening along with the left side of that.
All I'm saying is I can't testify exactly to its design, I'm just not familiar with it at all.
There was testimony, sense of testimony as to landscape provided at prior hearings. And Mr. Diamond also testified previously as to the selection of materials and how the architecture meets the ordinance requirements.
So can you tell me the materials that's going to be used to make the loading dock a pleasant view for people?
I think that...
What are you saying, based on what this person said? Are you saying that nobody on Mountain View will be able to see the loading docks because of this, this landscape? I'm not sure.
Madam Chair, I'm just going to object to this line of questioning, I don't think it's within scope of this testimony for this evening.
You just said...
Let's, let's just slow down a little bit. You actually had multiple questions just then, but one of them, ones that was relevant is, can you describe the materials that'll be used in the loading dock? So that's relevant to this direct testimony. Presumably some boards that may or may not be relevant. That is relevant to the direct testimony. You have to stay focused on direct testimony and you...
A simple answer to that question, yeah. The simple answer to the materials used in the loading dock is a building with a masonry base and a stuffo upper wall with some masonry accents on the piers.
So were those chosen to make it look pleasant? You're saying you chose materials to make it look pleasant, those chosen to make it look pleasant?
I think that generally where we put more attention to detail, and you could say more pedestrian, and again, you're asking for the shopper, somebody close in, we put more detail on the sides of buildings generally where people are walking as a rule. A little bit less detail on the backs of buildings, especially a grocery store. So I can't say that we detailed that with a great... So, I can't say that we detailed that with a great deal of very small-scale features, but we've certainly tried to keep a consistent palette around the whole building.
So then, one last question. Using the loading dock as an example, did you use, did you put less detail there because you know for sure that it will be screened by the, the landscaping that's supposed to be?
That is the customary way that we would approach it.
I don't think you answered the question, though.
I, I simply can't. I'd love to answer it with the certainty of an actual exhibit. I just, a landscape exhibit, I'm just not here with a landscape exhibit.
No, I'm asking as the landscaping is. I'm just asking, do you put less attention to detail back in the loading dock?
Yes.
Because you knew for sure that it would be screened by the landscaping?
That is best practice, and to do it that way.
I don't understand that answer. Are you saying you used less, you put less?
See, the first half of your question is, would I put less detail on the loading dock because of the landscape? The answer is yes. You're asking me, am I sure, how well, yes, and done?
I asked, did you? Did it ask, would you? Did it ask what the process...
Yes. Why don't I give you a simple yes? I think that's fair.
So, that will be screened? Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Diamond, quick, a quick question. I think we, the ShopRite came up. Do you have the materials and colors that are gonna be used on the ShopRite?
Yes, they are presented on the second to left board on the right.
Could you please identify that by, you have exhibit number?
It's 12F, and I know our home.
Does it state ShopRite on that exhibit? If you don't mind, here's the video.
It states Building 6. Building 6, that's the grocer.
Does it say grocer?
It says Building 6, I'm not sure if it says grocer.
Oh, it shows ShopRite.
Mr. Diamond, what materials on that board were used in that building?
I can give you the exact ones if you like.
Could you hold up the materials for the public to see too, please?
My suggestion, because there are seven boards, is anyone who comes up with a question to have a look at them.
I think if you just take a shot.
But if it's the ShopRite board in specifically, you can hold it up. I'm just trying to answer the previous question about which, what are the materials on, on that building?
Is it heavy?
Do you want it higher? Can you see it heavy?
I can help.
Yeah, you can, but...
So, if everybody can see it. Thank you.
Okay. So, that building has, has a brick in it, showing here as BR5. Oh, wait a minute. There, yeah, there are actually two bricks in that building that you can see on the left-hand side. There is a standing scene metal roof on the front canopy for ShopRite, which is a standing scene painted metal red. You see the red color overlaying the brick. There's also some medium bronze metal, which is overlaid over top of the brick, which is used for some of the accents. So, getting back to your question, there is a brick masonry base that wraps the entire building. There is a stucco color that is used on the upper walls around all sides. However, the piers that occur every about 30 feet are done with a brick masonry pier all the way up and a brick header. So, where we do use stucco, it is a panelized effect in a masonry frame.
Thank you, thank you, Paulina Allen. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, can I have a question that relates?
Yes, please.
Okay, you indicated that you consider the screening that will be necessary in the back as it relates to the neighbors, correct? You, you will be providing that adequate for visual screening. Can we just say that there will be, if you go out after the planning is done and the planner wishes to have infill because there are gaps, there are little, there are some weak spots, would you be willing to supplement that for the purpose of visual screening?
Yes, just the, I'll just make it clear.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry. Please come forward with your question. Yes, my name's Diane Ma, 743 Cedar Brook Road. I'm looking at the ShopRite drawing, and I believe you said there was like a 30-foot base between the pillars, or... My concern is, you're putting the buildings in, you're selecting the bricks, and all the colors seem to match nice, and it looks like you did a nice job figuring that out. What about signage? Is that part of your responsibility?
The signage application was, drawn to the application that'll be submitted under separate application.
The ShopRite sign that appears to be 30 feet long on that with the bright lights, that will be...
No, that...
...the ShopRite's decision?
No, that, that's not part of the application. It's just provided, you know, as an illustration.
Have you taken signage into consideration when you were putting this nice tall branch together as to where a sign could be?
Absolutely. It's, it's something that's very near and dear to us, especially as we're designing retail buildings. I think quantifying signage criteria for a number of retail tenants who could move in and, and turn over over time is, is an art and requires a special document. We normally call it a storefronted signage criteria. That's the kind of document that we would present at the appropriate time to give the flexibility of helping tenants understand how they can express themselves in a very positive way. We don't like low-quality signs, believe me. It really matters to us that, that signs are used tastefully and at pedestrian level whenever possible.
Because of the view of the neighbors and the light, right, lights that will be prepared from 7:00 in the morning till midnight?
Absolutely. We're, we're trying, we understand ShopRite may have a different vision of signage than a small retail tenant on Main Street might have, but we have to set up a framework to deal with both.
And the signage, lighting, and the lighting of the main street and all of the other streets, that lighting will come through on a different proposal?
We've had a prior testimony concerning that, but the, the signage will be under a separate application. So, Mr. Diamond has testified to how he considers signage, but at this point, there is no signage part of this package.
Thank you. Is there another member of the public with a question for this witness? Please come forward.
Maybe you first.
Hi, Selah, I'm a student of parents. Just a couple of questions. When you were selecting the trail, were you thinking about any sustainability? Like, how long the trail has been last besides just the look of it?
An interesting question. Certainly, masonry products have a very long life, as well as some images panel products. They're very long-lasting. But, when you talk about sustainability and you talk about retail, to us, one of the most important things is to be able to make sure that, that the commercial buildings are adapted to reuse, so they don't, they're not rendered obsolete when another tenant comes in and out. So, certainly, part of our design thought that we spend a lot of time on is make sure these buildings can adapt over time to leases. And we don't have a tenant who simply would prefer something to be torn down because it doesn't match their look and feel. So, it's very much top of mind for us that these buildings have a, a long life and a long adaptability life.
Also, did you consider any environmentally friendly material? And, and is, are you also doing LEED as part of your design as well?
At this point, I think this question was asked before. We, there are a number of different screen building standards. LEED happens to be one that takes a great deal of time to execute. There are other ones that give us a little bit more intelligence upfront if we're making the right material choices. I think we've said that we are gonna pursue one of those. I would have to go back to testimony to see exactly what we said about it. But, I understand your concern. I, I would say that it's something we care about a great deal. I can't tell you at this point what certifications that we're seeking on buildings.
Do you know what the lifespan of these insurance are, or generally?
Generally, anything you see there, it's gotta have something on the order of a 20-year-plus warranty.
It tells you defines a high, a high-quality material.
To us, a high-quality material has a good, well, there, to, you know, there's the, it's durability, as you mentioned, but also a sense of not being ordinary and repetitive, or to be special. And to us, we wanted to produce a very special palette for the project.
So, and my final question is, is when you were looking at giving this material, did you look, were you picking material based off its look first and then performance? Or did you not consider performance at all in your pick?
I would say that every material, every part of the building envelope has to live up to a durability of, you know, we, we're looking at buildings that have to at least function as 20-year buildings or more. We expect that from our builders. We expect that everything we pick is gonna have a substantial warranty behind it.
Thanks.
Autumn Party, N50 Tollot Drive. Are these drawings on the webpage?
Nicole?
All of the drawings were submitted to the planning board. They're available in the planning board's offices.
Planning Board's office. Is there a reason why these are not put on a webpage where the majority of the members can see them without going to the planning board? I mean, is there a reason they would not be put on? It's equal to all the technology we have, that it would be very reasonable to put this on a webpage where residents, even the ones coming here tonight, have a tough time looking at drawings like this? I think it's a suggestion that unless there's a real reason that can be made, a real, it should be considered, and it would be very advantageous to make these discussions go out a little bit faster and a little more clearly. Yes or no? Is it possible?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was a question right tomorrow.
I have that question. Is it possible to do that?
Well, we did provide copies.
Provided that I don't...
We provided also an electronic...
All right, maybe, maybe put another question. Is there a reason that they are not?
Not that I know of, is my response.
Madam Chairman, that's a good suggestion. And tomorrow, I will explore getting that on the website. It's gonna be very heavy, but it is 80 pages, so it's gonna be a lot. But, I think it's an extremely good recommendation, and I will explore that.
I'm gonna just jump in and say, we're gonna have to discuss that with IT, because we don't know that we have enough websites to propose it.
That's what I might want to do.
Number one, number two, it has been posted publicly online already.
Pardon?
It has been posted publicly online already.
You try to set a plan.
Really? Okay. Not by the township.
Can you share?
Thank you, thank you for the suggestion. Like the store said, we will, we will look into that tomorrow and see what kind of technology capabilities the township has. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Selah Smith, Put Hill Road. I have one question, maybe two. Where are the materials being made in the United States?
That's almost always true of masonry products, because they're very heavy and hard to ship. So, almost every brick product is made within the United States, and usually within the region.
Okay, so that was my second question. Is it gonna be done locally? And, I guess that question won't be produced, I'm not gonna even ask. Thank you.
I'm David, and one of those senators, Ben Joy. We talked about the landscaping and the screens, and people who used to have a nice view might be inheriting the ShopRite here. Can you explain in terms of the landscaping typically, I mean, ballpark? How ballpark, what's the ballpark height of the average tree that does that? Madam Chair.
This witness is not able to respond.
I don't think she testified about landscaping.
Can I have a question? I don't, I wanted to understand, is it a landscaping, a screening, and a visual screening? So, I don't have a good understanding of what that means, like, in the grand. Can you help me understand what you're talking about by visual screening and landscaping? Is there a screen?
The thing is, I'd like to be helpful and, and talk to you about it in principle, but I don't want to be found saying something that isn't consistent with the application and what's been provided. That's the only reason why I wouldn't respond, because I wanna make sure, give, give our, the applicant a chance that the screening that they have proposed, that the landscape architect could speak to it. And, and it's not simply my opinion of what is normally done. I'd love to show, make sure it's, it's clear what has been done.
Okay. Even though you can't, okay. Maybe it's just me that I didn't understand how landscaping, even the optimal landscaping, could camouflage a 13-foot, 6-inch tall plane, so I could get that, but you can't answer it.
Oh, well, no, he didn't actually say that. He's an architect, so these things, these are somewhat within his scope. Change that to a question.
Okay.
What will a tree do?
Can you describe a tree, sort of camouflage, typical delivery truck arriving at ShopRite at the height of 13 feet, 6 inches?
If I may simply speak on principle, I would say that a screen tree tends to be planted relatively close together and evergreen in nature, fast-growing, you know, one of the more popular ones. But again, I'm talking, I don't know what specifically our landscape architect proposed for this screen application. But certainly, we do tend to use evergreens as spacing that achieves that purpose. That's what I would say on principle only.
Okay. I guess as far, I'm kind of still understanding how this will help in terms of years down the road. I think it'll probably be too late, but I just have no understanding what would be in the first year to two years helpful? Is that your big people, or we planted 14-foot trees?
No, it's, it's a legitimate concern. I just can't give you an accurate answer.
Well, does a tree at its property line have to be forced to be tied as it'll provide visual screening of the loading dock area? She's always asking.
Right, and, and part of that, the answer to that would be the sightline, and that's something landscape architects have studied. It's, it's part of what they do when they design the site perimeter of, of screening. They do look at those sightlines of what a tree in the near term does for screening as, you know, your current vision goes out. They definitely put that, take that into account, and do appreciate your concern.
Madam Chair, I have just a question. Is it, my, my understanding that you said you would agree to work with the store on any screen that would be necessary?
Yes, sir.
And that would be landscape? I mean, I'm sorry, she may, this said earlier, is that thing that was brought up by the store that she asked if the applicant would work with us and with you, you know, the neighbors, on what screening can be done, just like Esther was another applicant that did the same thing for all the neighbors, and worked very well with them. And they had just agreed to do that.
We agreed to provide some infill landscaping. I believe we previously provided testimony as to the screening with red earrings.
And that would be for the purpose of providing a visual screen. So, if there's soft spots, you're gonna have to pump it up to make it so that the objective is to have a visual screen for the loading dock area.
Yes.
Good evening. George Anastasio, 525 Union. I have a question for the developer. There's a lot of talk of the, the site landscaping, the attenuation of the sight lines. As far as trucks are concerned, my, my opinion is that the more present factor would be sound attenuation. Now, are there any hard, say, you know, sound walls that are in the designs to attenuate the noise that will be accompanied of loading and unloading trucks? A dark truck, it loud. It gets louder as they get unloaded.
Yeah. I'd like to answer that with the same certainty. The landscape architect provides the site walls on the perimeter as well as the landscaping. I simply don't have that design in front of me, and I would like the landscape architect to address that. It's a fair point. Certainly, the, one could argue the number of trucks and with what frequency go back there, but I do understand your concern. Just don't believe I can answer it with...
Well, I'm not really concerned with the actual physical landscaping as far as trees and such. I'm talking about an actual architecture... I'm talking about an actual architectural design that would provide a sound wall, such as you can see on the side of 2-7.
Right, and I am, I am standing up here as an architect, but in fact, what happens with retaining walls that are used as part of grading and landscape, they are designed by the landscape architect. So, any hard walls and/or screened landscaping is provided by that consultant.
So, something in the neighborhood of 14, 15 feet tall would be part of an architectural design?
It is not part of the architectural, it is actually done by the landscape architect. Landscape architects are certified, they work with retaining walls, site walls, and landscaping.
So, was sound attenuation in any way considered in the design of the property as far as the shopright is concerned?
I would prefer the landscape architect speak to that.
So, you got no designs as of now, as far as sound?
I would say that as a retail site, we certainly did not think of it as you would attenuate a highway, but it's a fair question, I just cannot answer it with the exact application of that screen condition.
My point is that the concern is for the residential people in that area, they will be now subject to something they're not usually subjected to, which is loud noise on the truck loading.
And I appreciate it, and if I was in the same position, I would be asking the same question. All I'm saying is I don't have the answer that I think you're seeking, which is, which is actually in the application, I'm just not referring to it, and even if I were, I would still think that the landscape architect should respond to the considerations they put on the perimeter screen, but I do appreciate your concern.
Officer, it's on the Mountview Road. So, I just want to get back to the sound thing. I understand that you are not a landscaper, but as an architect, are you aware of any type of single row of areas that could actually screen the sound of tractor trailers coming in late at night to load and unload?
Madam Chair, I don't believe this suits at all with Mr. Diamond's expertise and his testimony.
He's a, he's an expert architect.
Question really, landscaping?
Yeah. I'm not asking... I think, I think that this is not the question for this witness. If you could shape it differently.
Okay.
I mean, you're, you're asking a question about, asking an architect about knowledge of trees, and you have the possibility perhaps the other way.
Okay, let me try once more then. As an architect, I don't, I don't know how else to ask the question without including trees. So, I guess I'm just a bit disappointed that nobody's actually employed at this, so, thank you.
Chair, and a member of the public with a question, from this witness.
Taking a different stab at the sound question. When you selected materials for a site that we're discussing here tonight, did you, do you have any measurements or data to suggest how they reflect sound? You have, like earlier, did these materials reflect sound, and how do you measure that?
The answer is no. The exterior materials of these retail buildings are not evaluated for how they reflect sound.
When you selected the materials, did you take into account sound bouncing off of the materials and whether that gets magnified or muffled when these type of materials were used?
I would say that for the buildings that we were designing along Main Street, and understanding that we're creating a pedestrian environment, an active pedestrian environment, the fact that harder materials reflect more than more absorptive materials was not a concern to us. We tend to look at more absorptive materials on interior spaces, and occasionally, it is a fair question in public spaces, how do trees and landscaping possibly bring down the ambient noise? But I would say that generally what we've been designing is an active retail environment, where our goal is not necessarily for it to be extremely quiet. In times that it is, we design to that standard more.
And just to make sure I'm clear on my questions. My questions are referring specifically right now to the materials you selected and not whether or not they may be mitigated by trees or other activities as I mentioned in the talk about. So, I appreciate your answer, but just so I'm clear, are you suggesting that the sound, I don't know if sound is reflected, I don't know if that's the right terminology, so I can hear you to come make this the wrong term, but you did not consider how sound will bounce off of this material or not when selecting material?
I would say that, again, where, where sound design becomes much more pertinent in an interior space, I would say that the use of hard materials for exterior façades tends to reflect sound.
I'm going to try asking it one more time a different way, because I get what you're saying, but when you selected that material, did you look at it and say, well, this material's going to be a little bit louder, this material's going to be a little bit softer, so I'm selecting the softer material as opposed to louder material? Or did that not factor into how you selected that material from these boards?
That did not factor in.
Okay. So, my next question is, is there material that could be used on certain areas, such as the loading dock that people have asked questions about, that would help reduce the noise that bounces off of the wall from a tractor trailer or a loading dock garage or up and down? Is there other material that could be used that would have a more absorptive sound quality than the material that you're suggesting?
I would say most of the materials that I've worked with in the retail design space are not absorptive. I do think they diffuse sound though, because masonry and other stuff of products do not have very clean surfaces, so I don't think you get very clean echoes off of them, but they are hard exterior materials, so they don't tend to absorb.
So, for this project, is there material that could be used for those areas most prone to reflect loud noise that could be used to help reduce the noise instead of what's being proposed, especially on the loading dock next to the shopright?
Well, it seems like the, the concern is, you're wondering how much of the sound bounces off the building versus how much of it projects out into the parking lot?
I, I guess by default, what I'm asking is, I think of brick, and I think if you could be near brick buildings and it echoes, it bounces, it's loud, just like you talked about indoors, you use different material and it helps absorb. So, for the loading dock area, is there other material than what you're currently proposing that could help stop the sound from bouncing off the walls and then into the neighbor's backyard that is more absorptive, absorptive, I don't know if that's the right word, that could be used?
I would say it's something I would have to research. It's not something I've typically been asked to do. I'm sure there are materials on the market that are more absorptive. They're not typically used for exterior façades, but I'm not discounting if something doesn't exist.
Okay. Just a general question for you, in the process of your work on this matter, have you had conversations with board members regarding your designs, or whether your designs in general, or you've selected any materials?
Yes.
Can you tell us when you had those conversations and with whom you had them?
I think to site dates of our public hearings, I'd probably refer to Nicole, but I would say these have been, they have been, they have been hearings, they have been pre-application meetings to make sure we had completeness of the application. Bringing all those dates together is something I would prefer the applicant to do, and I don't have them off the top of my head.
Let me ask you just a little bit away. Since the application was officially put forward, have you had any conversations with board members outside of a public hearing regarding any of the work you've done in this application?
Absolutely none.
Thank you very much.
Julia Marx, 1012, Wall Street Drive. Earlier this week, there were some videos put out. Did you please speak in the mic? Sorry. I saw two videos earlier this week put out by Nancy Ralty, giving a kind of walkthrough tour. I hadn't previously seen any of this material online. Were you involved in the development of those videos?
You have to help them know what videos you saw before you can...
Well, they were a...
Where, where did you see, yeah, the, the Leah Foundation.
Sure.
Where you saw something, where, and what did it look like, and then what was the date and maybe even more information before you asked her if you did see it?
Kind of assumed she may have been involved with it. It came across as sponsored advertisements on social media. There might be it. And they gave a, a big walkthrough tour of this main street to...
When you designed the building, did you follow the ordinance of the 20% from the first floor is to be glass?
Yes.
Good evening, Senator, 17, Wall Street. Sir, you testified that these is the materials that will be on the facade of the buildings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then through subsequent testimony, we were told that the Building Six model is not accurate because it includes shopright logo. Is that correct?
I just want to connect to that, I just noted that it was an illustration and it wasn't with signage. Let me just finish, because the signage is going to be under another application.
I understand. My, my question, sir, is besides the Board for Building Six, which includes signage, which will be covered at a later time, what, out of all the other boards, what else is included that shouldn't be, if anything?
Not sure I understand the question. What else is included that shouldn't be?
So, on, on the Board for Building Six?
Yeah.
We understand that it includes signage for shopping. Do any of these other boards contain any other similar things, whether it's signage or something else, that is not relevant at this point in time for your testimony?
I'm going to say yes, in the sense that there is sample retail tenant signage occurring on a few of the retail façades.
Okay. Anything else?
That is sample of, no, the only thing I see is a sample tenant sign here and there, but understanding that that needs to be applied separately, you know, with, with certain standards.
Thank you. One other question. And I know we've touched on sound, and we've touched on light and how these different materials will react to that. Similar question, but slightly different. What impact, if any, would benzene, which we understand is on the site, or any other chemicals, have on this material and the 20-year lifespan that you testified to?
Not sure what the foundation is for this question, Madam Chair.
This, this witness didn't testify about benzene.
I realize that, I'm just, I didn't say he did, I'm asking a question, how that would impact that?
You have to have some foundation for why that would even be of concern. What, what, what are you hypothesizing about?
I'm not hypothesizing anything, there's been some...
How would it affect these buildings?
Because there's media...
Where, where do you, in your question, lay the foundation for?
There, there's media reports of benzene and other chemicals on this site and current efforts by the DEP as it relates to remediation. So, I'm just wondering if that is exposed to this...
Is that the groundwater, sorry, is that the...
I, I, I'm not testifying then in any...
You're asking questions, you have to lay the foundation as requested by the objection.
Okay.
So, you, you think that there's benzene in the groundwater on the property?
There's various reports of whether it's in the groundwater or in the ground, whether it's one lost site. I, I'm not here, I don't, I don't provide that testimony.
I know that, that you can ask the question.
Yeah, right.
So, go ahead and ask the question now, based upon your foundation, which is you're saying that there are reports of benzene and that they get in the groundwater, and you want to know whether benzene in the groundwater would affect these materials? That would be your venue.
I'm just, I'm not going that far, I was trying to keep it much more general to avoid going into an area that hasn't been touched. So, I'm just asking, much like we talked about how this will... First, can I describe how you think the benzene is getting from the materials? So, that, that would be helpful. Okay. Based upon reports that there's benzene in this site, how would that impact any of these materials?
I just object to the line of questioning, it's not within the scope of Mr. Diamond's testimony and lacking in any foundation.
Okay. Let me rephrase one last time. When you were choosing materials, was it shared with you that there may or may not be any chemicals on this site that could impact these materials and how, and the materials you chose?
The answer is no, and, you know, certainly for any of the design professionals to react to chemicals, we need to understand their presence and how they're being delivered to the site to, to have a judgment.
So, based upon that, if you were made aware that you may or may not choose different materials?
It's, it's speculative.
Clarify what the questions relating to, you said it, it, what is the if?
The if is, he said he was not made aware that there was any potential chemicals on this site, I'm just saying if he had been made aware of that, it may or may not change the chemicals he used, or the materials he used, I'm sorry.
I, I think that, first of all, when talking about chemicals and I'm, you know, there's a certain limit, I would go to my expertise, but I would say if, if we understood something like that and if were to be true, we would first probably be concerned about the foundation design, because that's touching the ground. But again, I think these, what I call super story materials are a different story where they're impacted by rainwater, winds, snow, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Ross Standard and St. Seaver. You mentioned green building standards before. Can you tell us whether you've chosen materials for solar panels?
We have not chosen materials for solar panels. I'm speaking of the mixed-use commercial buildings, and I would say at this point that has not been part of our design.
Can you tell us why not? This is certainly an obvious kind of thing, it's been used, solar panels being used throughout Bridgewater, wouldn't this make sense?
It might be a good decision, and, you know, they certainly have operational advantages that, you know, the, the first cost of solar panels are realized over time. I would just say it's something we've not discussed at this moment. It is something that we get into when we look at the service life of buildings and utility costs and so forth. It's a fair question, I just would not say we've built it into the building design as of yet.
Do you not think then that the planning board should defer further consideration until you have given that some consideration as to why not make these buildings more energy-efficient?
I just object to the question, Chair. Mr. Diamond provided extensive testimony as to what the application entails in the architecture, and he also confirmed that it's not part of the application. So, we, we object to any...
The objection is it should be sustained, Mr. Standard, you have to focus on his testimony on the record, and just to help you understand it too, I think in particular you can build solar panels on your roof by, by ordinance, you're allowed, and you're in fact encouraged to have solar panels on your roofs. So, it's not something that's a big problem, that they would have to do much to add solar panels, so, I don't know whether you appreciate that, but solar is encouraged by the township.
So, we can...
You can have an eye somebody if you don't put solar.
That helps you. I'd like to go back to the video that the lady brought up a moment ago. Did you indicate that that video that you, you posted is on the website, developer?
Not sure which website, you didn't know anything about the...
No, I, I'm not aware of how it was posted, since we produced it for the applicant for marketing purposes. At that point, I don't know who's posted it for what purpose.
The website I'm referring to is the website the lady referred to, preservingbridgewater.com.
I understand, I just don't have, I just don't have knowledge of who's posted the video.
Are you surprised that it's on that website?
Uh, no, it's, it's really, I, I have, uh, complete confidence for the design to be revealed to the public and I don't have any problem with that video being posted publicly.
Uh, don't, don't you feel that, uh, the website that your video is posted on, preservingbridgewater.com, is trying to mislead the public because the opposing group, preservebridgewater.com, uh, has a very similar URL?
Uh, Madam Chair, this has nothing to do with...
Mr. Standard, this, this is now beyond the scope of Mr. Diamond's testimony. Uh, so, if you have any more questions, focus on his testimony.
Well, I think the board should pay attention to...
No more statements, Mr. Standard, until after the next, the last witness on the direct, then the board witness.
Marjorie Davidson, 007, Rosemary Joy. Were you the architect in charge of meeting the ADA and Disabilities Act requirements?
My...
Well, you're the architect, um, involved in meeting the ADA, American, um, Disabilities Act requirements in the architectural sign?
Madam Chair, this doesn't...
This is not really within the scope of the direct testimony, which is tonight, which is about these materials.
Is there another member of the public with a question for this witness? Please come forward. You've been standing there, right?
Um, my name is Sonia Shakaal. I'm at nine four six Garfield Avenue in Bridgewater. I was wondering, is there an enclosure for, um, that contains garbage or waste of the site? And what material is it made of? Chain link or, uh, was it compostable or...
Uh, each retail building has a trash enclosure. Uh, I'm trying to remember what that was, uh, designed in PSS, PS and S's civil site package. It is definitely not chain link fence. It is a solid, non-view enclosure.
Um, are they located behind the buildings?
They are, uh, there is one available behind each retail building. They're relatively small and distributed.
Can we throw so far down drive for you, George? Good evening, Mr. Diamond.
Good evening.
I've got questions. Uh, start off, I did a video. That's, I'll probably have more questions for you. Um, what, what I would like to know specifically is, since you're familiar with the video, does it accurately reflect the materials that you've selected and are you testifying to here this evening?
Uh, what happens in the production of a marketing video is the digital design model is run through a video process in Lumion. I, from what I recall of that video, the drive-throughs were relatively quick for the streets. So, they started with our material palette, just like you see on these boards. Uh, I think that in terms of what I call the richness of the materials, those don't tend to get very revealed by a quick drive-through video because, uh, the rendering tends to make these things pretty flat and move past pretty fast. And that's why there's somewhat the value of looking at the actual full-scale material to see kind of much more of the richness of the texture.
So, you don't really have a really full sense of the, the colors and the textures of the materials I'm looking at, correct?
No, I think you do. Everything in a video does tend to change a little bit depending on the way the light is giving it. On some video passes, you may have direct sunlight on a building. Sometimes you're seeing it in shade. But generally, building colors do look different in sun and shade. So, uh, I would say it works with all those factors. Uh, but any building in the video may have a shaded view on one pass and a sunny view on the other. So, it's, uh, but I think it was made with a good deal of care. Lumion is a very good video production program and tries to render it just as it is.
Uh, this is my next question. Do you not obey the video?
Yes. I mean, if I had my preference to not, you know, bring other names into the public record, I would. I certainly know that individual. Um, could I leave it at that?
Was that under your direction and control?
Yes.
Um, the, does the video reflect the materials that you brought here this evening as part of your testimony?
I, I just wanted to know my objection on the record. The, uh, the witness previously testified that this is a video, a marketing video for the ORD zone and these material palettes relate to the RC zone. We previously have identified and marked a video of the architecture for the RC zone. So, I'm objecting to this line of testimony.
I would just note for the record, Mr. Collins, I, I object to the way that the counsel is, is creating an objection because she's actually doing this. She's leading the witness with testimony. And it's not appropriate. You should just make her objection as a matter of law. Don't let me decide it. But by coaching the witness, he's painting the testimony that's about to be given.
I don't know what, I was just coached to do. What did she ask me to say? I don't know. Uh, I think, Mr. Pedrosa, you have to focus on the objection. And I think the objection is that the video is about a different portion of the property than what you're talking about. Now, I don't know that. So, perhaps you want to explain what portion of the property in the video that you looked at, you, you would like to ask him about? And if it's the ORD portion, then it does sound like the objection should, should be sustained because the discussion by this witness is about the RC portion of the property. I don't know what you two are talking about, so I'll leave it to you to figure out what you're talking about.
Mr. Collins, according to the, uh, Mr. Diamond, the video was prepared under his directions. So, he's testifying. He's familiar with the video. And when it comes to my, my questions, it's really about what he's testifying this evening and the part of the project and, and the palette samples that he's brought here tonight. And I'm asking specifically about that. And my question again is, does that video accurately reflect, uh, these samples that he's brought here this evening and the portions that it contains, these samples?
I'm happy to answer that. Um, the answer is yes. The video works with a digital model. The digital model uses the palette that you see directly on these boards in the building elevations. There is an extra level of texture that, uh, that you can see when the physical materials are picked out and you can see, you know, at a much finer grain, the texture of the materials. But the elevations, since that, uh, video was produced, have not changed. They were interpreted in a digital set of material boards produced a year ago. And these physical boards, uh, were prepared, uh, per request and are consistent with that.
Since the time that that video was produced, has anything changed architecturally with respect to your portion of your testimony this evening? Have there been any changes to the architectural design or colors or palette or the textures?
There were two, during the application process, there were two, uh, areas where we had made modifications to the design. And I don't, one of them was to upgrade the material palette of ShopRite, which we did and has represented. Um, and the other one was to add building seven, which is, um, uh, which screens ShopRite from the front of the road. My question, without looking at the full length of the video, is were both of those changes picked up in that video that was produced over a year ago? I don't know without looking at the full video.
What was the upgrade to the palette of ShopRite?
Uh, a good deal more masonry, both at the entrance and around the building. We in, increased the percentage of masonry on the building and got it a lot closer to ShopRite's, uh, store that was actually illustrated in the ordinance or the, the development plan. So, what we actually came up with was something almost identical as, uh, what was, as, as it rested as what was asked for in the development plan.
Was that diamond cooperation with ShopRite?
That, ShopRite still needs to accept that. I would say that I address the board's comment in upgrading the material. I can't comment on the conversation with ShopRite.
Uh, Mr. Diamond, were you involved in the design of the roof?
Uh, at the level of, of development that these are, which is a final schematic design, uh, I would say at a schematic level, yes. Um, what specifically is your question?
Uh, earlier you testified that the roof may have some reflective material. Do you recall that testimony?
Uh, I was trying, you know, to understand what was being asked about the term reflectivity because, uh, when we talk about green building, the choice of roof material color can be one of those factors to upgrade the energy performance of a building. But I can tell you at this level what color we've chosen for the flat roofs. Certainly, any roofs that are seen from pedestrians that I would call more architectural features or canopies, those have all been selected. Those are all part of the boards. And a flat roof, we've not actually specified a color at this point.
Have you considered, uh, when it comes to the roof, reflectivity of the building in general, the elevation of the surrounding homes in the neighborhood?
Uh, the roof of the buildings is screened, uh, will not be seen. The flat roofs all have parapets at least, uh, three feet high to screen them. So, we do not anticipate any flat roofs to be seen by the surrounding properties.
But by that, you're, I presume your answer pertains to homes that are adjacent to, at a similar elevation or below the buildings, are correct?
We make sure those roofs are not seen, uh, from close up or pretty far away. Uh, if there were a terrain question where, you know, there was a very elevated position outside of the property, it's a fair question. I just can't answer it. But we do try to do whatever we call a, a normal practice of screening building roofs, uh, also the screening of chemical equipment and whatnot. So, there's usually a minimum that we try to hit for that.
If I tell you that there are homes in, in the neighborhood that are higher elevation than, than buildings, uh, do you know if anything was taken into consideration when it comes to reflectivity of the roof and how many of these impact the homes are higher than this, in this project?
Well, one question would be, is, uh, I don't mean to answer a question with a question. The question is, a light-colored flat roof, how would it reflect to a property on the side? Its, its intention is to reflect solar gain that's beating down on it and reflect it up. Uh, if your concern was, does a roof create a reflection to a surrounding property? Uh, I appreciate the question. I don't think a light-colored roof would do that.
Well, it is a fact that the sun sets to the west, right? So, I'm going to ask you a question. I presume you know that. So, if the sun is setting to the west, right? And, and, uh, the light is coming from the west, hitting the roof, it would presumably, and you're the expert, projected now to the east on a same angle. So, would that light not potentially be reflected for its homes that are higher than the building?
Uh, I understand your question and I think that if any roof were made of a highly reflective material, um, is that possible? Uh, you know, I, I, I'm trying to understand it. I just can't look at it from a, a site section and confirm or deny something like that. It's a fair question. I would say that even a light-colored roof that's used on a building is not a mirror finish. It's a light-colored roof. We've not made a decision to use a light-colored roof. Uh, I think that, you know, generally, you know, it's a decision that could increase the energy performance of the building. It's one of many, uh, things you can do to improve energy performance. That decision hasn't been made.
Okay, my question is to the board, has there been any testimony prior hearings regarding to the roof substance and its reflectivity? Or does it answer questions? Am I wrong? So, you don't have, you don't know what material will be selected for the roof?
I would say customarily, it is a, uh, it is a membrane roof or a built-up roof. Uh, but again, depending on color, uh, traditional built-up roofs tend to be black and do not, and they are not reflective. I think the lighter colored roofs are actually coming to market relatively recently and it's, um, you know, something that could be looked at to, uh, into. But I would say traditionally, these tend to be darker roofs.
Well, I'll, so I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I think that's an important issue that should, that should be considered. Um, in your earlier testimony, I believe during, uh, questioning, by the, by the second, um, person that came up before you, you testified during your answer that you felt, and I'm quoting you, that this is relatively small and, quote, town centering. Would you tell me as to, um, what exactly are you comparing? What other town centers are you comparing this to? And you say relatively small.
I'd just like to know my objection for the record, that this is outside the scope of Mr. Diamond's testimony.
Uh, Mr. Collins, I'm listening. Was he tested?
It's somewhat within the scope of what, how he answered your question, though. So, um, without going too far, feeling just as if, you think that's an answer. Uh, it's a fair question and believe me, by editorializing, I, I create more questions. So, forgive me. I don't, don't mean to do that. Uh, generally, what I mean is, uh, I've been doing town centers for 20 years. Uh, and in fact, many different retail properties are called town centers. We're not necessarily even calling this a town center. Um, ULI tends to call a town center a mixed-use commercial property with two, at least three uses on it. They use the word lifestyle center for, uh, more single-use shopping districts that kind of feel like, like, you know, have similar environments, but don't actually have any vertical mixed use. So, town centers in the 1990s, when retail, specialty retail was very strong, tended to be a quarter million to a half a million square feet. They tended to be very large and you see the legacy of a lot of the larger, uh, commercial projects. Some of them have held up over the years. Some of them are distressed and are, you know, it... So, I think it's, it's a fair question to always meet the market. And I think it's very important. There's a lot of risk in developing a project that you don't overdevelop and you don't over-retail. So, the answer is, we think it is a right-sized project. Call it what you will, but if we're going to call it, you know, it, it will have to be branded. It'll probably not be called, uh, the whatever Town Center. I think it will have a much, you know, again, it's a very tired word and very misconstrued word. But it will be right-sized for, we think, the community and for the campus and the onsite population because, uh, we do have an onsite population of research and development, which we have hoped will help somewhat with the customer base as well as the planning community.
Well, when you said, when you used the word relative, like relatively small implies that you're comparing it to something else. Could you give me some examples of what you mean by relatively small compared to what?
I think this question, line of questioning is getting repetitive at this point.
The only problem is it does tend to spin on for quite a while. You're, you're talking about a lot of retail presidents nationally. But I would say that typically retail that had a, that you could say the generation of projects that, that took the place of outdoor retailing as opposed to malls originally were much larger. They were, tended to be four to 500,000 square feet of retail alone, not including any other mixes. So, I think this project, uh, reflects, uh, the realities of the retail landscape and the mix of it is appropriate and it's much smaller.
Perhaps it's my fault in not understanding my question. Well, I'm trying to get a comparison to maybe other townships and other specific projects that we've worked on. That you can compare and say, this is relatively small compared to something else. Trying to get a sense of, of, of like apples-to-apples comparison of an other project that maybe you don't, you know, done in the past.
Just continuing to object to this line of questioning, and it is outside the scope of Mr. Diamond's testimony.
He hasn't answered my, my question.
I think the question should be answered if he has any examples that he thinks are, uh, bigger or smaller.
Sure.
Uh, and keep in mind that, uh, I'm based in Washington DC and have worked on projects across the country. I'm not going to be quoting a lot of projects here very close by. Uh, but... But worked on a number of projects. The Green Town Center in Beaver Creek, Ohio is one of them, is one I'm very proud of. It originally opened with 400,000 square feet of retail. It was later expanded to 800,000 square feet of retail by the developer. And that's one of the reasons it has fallen into some trouble. Because when it was doubled in size, it really was not yet at the point where the market was starting to turn in the other direction. So, there's a lot of lessons learned in the retail space. But in my experience, four and 500,000 square foot projects have done very well. When they have been expanded to 800 and a million square feet, which is something very similar to a regional shopping mall, that's when they tended to fail. With some exception, there are a couple of incredible sites where large town centers have worked. By and large, there was a time and place, you know, retail can be transactional, where too much retail was built, and we're trying to not do that here.
I must confess, I don't know where Beaver Creek, Ohio is. But do you know if that township is a suburban nature the way that original township is?
Yes.
Any other projects that you can say this is relatively small compared to?
Sure. National Barber, Washington DC.
Well, we can certainly say that.
Can certainly say that. East, Eastern Town Center, Columbus, Ohio. That's a million two square feet of retail.
That's also more working for, any other suburban townships? Are you getting any?
I don't think he said that it's more of...
Right, I, I'm, you know, everyone has their own context. I'm only telling you that we're trying to make the right response for here. You know, when I quote other projects, we're talking about things that were developed at a different time, when the retail landscape was different, in a different locations. So, it's kind of like, I, you know, I feel like I'm continuing to pull out a portfolio of projects. But, you know, they can be evaluated, you know, in different ways because the landscape of retail has changed. And what made, most of my projects have opened up to incredible first results, you know. And 10 years on is a very sensitive time for retail, especially very large retail projects, when leases turn. We're trying to make sure that we don't have an over-retail project here that requires a lot of retening over years.
But you're, I'm not a planner, so your answer does not pertain to how this project may or may not fit within a planning, planning perspective in original township, as I heard.
I object to this question.
We do, there is another witness who has specified, who's so good to you.
I think that the line, now we're beyond the scope of his direct, so.
Just confirming that he's not a planner.
And he says he's not, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Trump, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just follow up on something that I think Mr. Frigoso. Is, is there a roof color or material that maximizes energy efficiency while minimizing reflectivity? Best of both worlds?
I think it's, it's a fair question, you know, in terms of calibrating the reflectiveness as well as the color. And I'd love to research that and give you the ideal mix. I just can't tell you exactly, because it's two factors, it's color and reflectivity. I could certainly get back to you with a good answer.
Where, where the research is?
Yep.
Andy Fresco, Land Eagle Drive. Sir, Mr. Diamond, actually I broke your name down. You mentioned it a few times, and I'm, I'm not familiar with Building 7. Can you elaborate on what Building 7 is?
I think that's actually Building 11. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's this one on the app, Building 2.
And what road is that directly south of your finger there? What road is that on there?
Route 202-206.
202-206, okay, so. Would you just repeat, what Building 7 is, what, what? That's it, what?
I just wanted to check the line of questioning. We gave extensive testimony as to which buildings were which, and the architecture for each building. Tonight's testimony.
Now, I want to focus, Mr. Fresco, on the materials, I take it that you're interested in, or Building 11, so focus on them, just the materials.
Okay, so, so wait a minute. For the record, he said the word Building 7 twice. I may have exaggerated when I said three times. You are now saying that you didn't say Building 7, you did in fact say Building 11?
I'm not saying what I said, I'm saying that the correct, the correct block designation is Building 11. If I said Building 7, I missed it.
Okay, twice. Okay, so I will stay on, and I will quote him by saying, you said, and I'm quoting you saying Building 7 to be accurate, but we know now it's Building 11, that Building 7-11 was added later. Why was it added later?
That, Terry, is one of objects of this line of questioning. We already went through this in prior hearings.
No, but he just said that, though. He did, he did answer a question that way on question examination, so it's relevant to what he testified on.
Can you tell us why it was added?
Happy to answer that. The original area of the site, we had, because the grocery store building was significantly backed from Route 202-206, our vision for screening the grocery store, understanding that grocery stores really do like to have direct visibility, and that would certainly be their preference. We tried to do it with landscape screening. Grocery stores are very particular players about visibility. We, we understood that that is, was an issue for the planning board. And there was a thought that in keeping that view open, we were not complying with the spirit of the RC plan, even though we were trying to make a market-based decision. As such, we introduced a block that was deemed appropriate by actually screening the grocery store, which is what we've done, as well as adding some multifamily more distributed along the site.
Okay, so for all the residents that live 100 feet, can you explain to us what a market-based decision is? I know the answer, obviously, but I do, I don't know that everybody knows.
A market-based decision?
This line of questioning is outside the scope of this testimony. It has nothing to do with the material boards that are being reflected.
No, it's there.
Maybe you want to get to some point that the way this gets answered that you're...
Sure, so are you saying that you added that building because the board wanted you to add that building because you wanted to screen the shop right?
I just want to check again, we had extensive testimony and prior hearings on the decision to add Building 11.
The question is relevant to the answers he gave on process examination.
Yeah, I, I think I can answer that.
I think his question actually is to compound, you have to break that down, Mr. Frigoso. I think it's basically a...
Okay, I did.
Maybe you want to be more direct. Why, why did you put the building?
I started that way, she actually did.
You said you can proceed with the question, then you changed it, so.
Okay.
So, why don't you just go direct to what you want to know?
Why did I add the building? Why did we add the building? On a retail site, I can only tell you that you are trying to factor in the, certainly, the requirements of all of the operators within the retail site. The grocery store is certainly one of those operators who has strong views about what they like for a retail site, including visibility. We understood that landscape screening was not sufficient. The planning board believed that this was not just a matter of screening, but also did not represent enough distribution of the mixed use. They felt this would be a much more positive move in bringing the plan into the spirit of the redevelopment.
Is that building, we use the same materials that you're presenting here?
It is on the leftmost side of the table. That is the palette.
Closest to me or further to it?
It's, uh, sorry, right.
Well, it's G.
The fire goes wide on there. Feel free to hold it up.
I will, I will. So, that, that clearly is, is very different, actually. I mean, I'm in the red, but I mean, that's, that's very different. You can see that, it doesn't have the natural color.
Is there a question?
Why was the, why were the materials so different on that building than these buildings?
I think it does have a slightly different palette. But we chose to use a panelized product to create the look of cast stone rather than using the look of brick. It's, it's a different color palette. But that was not done for any intention. We never said, let's use a different or, you know. It's certainly striking you as somehow less desirable. But we did not look at it or intend to make it any less desirable than the other buildings.
I just want to note for the record, I care that the applicant did make extensive testimony as to the selection of all these materials and their compliance with redevelopment plan.
Laura, I thought that was what we were here to talk about. Aren't we here to talk about these materials? And isn't that what we're talking about? Materials, I, I'm asking a question. You don't need to be a wonderfully talented man to realize that looks like a prison. I mean, that's all stone, it's stone and mortar, there's no color around.
I don't agree with that whatsoever. We've done some beautiful images of that building, it is no prison.
Does it have 40% glass?
I don't even know.
But that was for the retail portion of the, the RC. If you can read the orders, you'll see that was referring to retail.
Gotcha, my, my bad, thank you. Okay, final question about the roof. Have you, have you gone to the homes that are directly across the street and to see if you can see the roofs of these buildings? Because currently, folks that live on Land Eagle Drive, folks that live on Tall Oaks Drive, those folks actually can see the roof of the buildings currently. So, have you done any research? Have you done any, have you sent anybody?
I just want to object to this line of questioning is repetitive. There was prior testimony as to the visibility of roofs and the screening of mechanical equipment previously provided. This line of questioning is repetitive.
That's fine, that's fine, I'll take that.
No, no, that is, that's legitimate, that's legitimate area of questioning.
No, I will just say no, I'll leave it at that.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Fresco.
Sorry, any member? Do we have to call it, or should I?
Oh, you can ask, well, Jerry, you can ask.
Why don't we call it for this evening?
We need to have some traveling back again. Jay, are you available tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, good. Up to the chair now. We have tomorrow scheduled to be available for the board?
Yeah, tomorrow. I will run the call.
My question, please, from having back, back meetings with the board, in the prior, the planning board and the zoning board, which were, there's never been a back-to-back meeting. And I'm not sure what the intent is to get information or wear out publicly, so I'll come back tomorrow.
Councilman, I, I believe if the, if we have a quorum, we've scheduled a meeting, we should meet.
Mayor, I'm very much aware, if you want to play any projects through.
Councilman, back to Mr. Sodow. Councilman, as, we're talking about volunteers giving their time. And you were paid to be here, so if we have a quorum, we should do people's business.
Volunteering, I'm not.
Gracious, Mayor.
I'd like to call the board to find out who does have meetings tomorrow.
Are you available tomorrow? Miss, uh, Mary is?
Yes.
Word's far.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm...
Councilman?
I'd be...
Steve.
Yes, I'd be here.
I'm available, but I would prefer having a meeting with those of us who have sat through this from the beginning, because it's the most productive thing to have time. So, if two are absent, I would openly postpone it. If two are here, every year, I would say go forward.
I'm available.
Do the right thing.
Pull the audience.
I would like...
One thing is clear, it's probably not going to end tomorrow night, even if we have...
That's my thought, that it's not going to end tomorrow night. And we're going to have to schedule another meeting for November 12th, regardless. We have Mr. Troutman coming to testify tomorrow night.
I'd like to have an environmental consultant, he's several, well, he can't come tomorrow, but he's available at either of the November or December meetings. Because the issue of benzene has come up, and he knows benzene better than anybody.
That's an issue utterly outside of the jurisdiction of this board. And if we're going to waste time, Jason...
It's your part, sir.
No, please, let me hear.
I apologize.
This, this is a, okay, finish. Sorry, I...
Please, the township hired an environmental consultant. And part of the issue was the, the issue of benzene remediation.
Right.
The issue of benzene has been, has been raised at this meeting. And from a practical standpoint, I think the residents deserve an answer as to what has happened. And, and he may come in and... But we have not really seen it until, until this map came within the past week. I had, I had not seen it, I asked for it.
Mr. Collins, my point, my point is this. Benzene is a DEP issue, it's not an issue for the township or brick water. with the township of Bridgewater.
We're not criticizing that.
Sorry, we're just scheduling the meeting. If I can do anything more to schedule a meeting right now, Mr. Seville is available on November 12. I am certain that we are going to be tomorrow night and at least November 12, and we want to make every opportunity of tomorrow night and on November 12, for the public to be able to testify, because they have not testified yet. So, my recommendation is that we, the chair just decide, are we meeting tomorrow night? At a minimum, we have to be on November 12.
I would like.
Not gonna decide issues about benzene tonight, right?
I, because we're gonna need two meetings, I would like to have a meeting tomorrow night. Mr. Franco and I will listen to the tapes for tomorrow night, that we have fully prepared for the 12. The witness for benzene that Mr. Norholz wants is only available on the 12, so we will also have a meeting on the 12. So, this won.
And Mr. Troutman is still objective that the testifying is our, our township that is testing, but at least we have him available at night. So.
And I'm just, having said, you'll still have to. I'm just in this sense, I'm just trying to have it be the case that the board is not just led into, into chasing an issue that is utterly without, out of their jurisdiction.
Understood.
We are on tomorrow and November 12. I have the testimony. And hoping you care.
Mr. Franklin, we would like an extension of time to November 13, 2019.
You're answered.
Mr. Fr, Mr. Fr, we're not gonna enter anymore, you work that.
Yes, I.
You're lucky to be here.
You can't.
You're not addressing the board at this time. The hearing is over for tonight. We are only scheduling the meeting for tomorrow night and November 12. We have not done yet, so stop talking, sir.
As this portion of the meeting is over, I would like to go back to a prior agenda item, which was more related to the.
Please, do the time of the meeting and.
Yes, uh.
It is 10:27, according to my.
So, meeting is for tomorrow night.
Oh, I'm sorry. Morning, 7 o'clock here, November 12.
No further notice.
7 o'clock here. No further notice.
And do you think tomorrow night, when we hear the township's traffic?
Yes.
That is fine.
We hope to, we hope that we get you.
Yes.
We're still under the press conference, Mr. Diamond, so we'll be trying to.
I was gonna ask you that. We need you to go on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Diamond.